Good evening. My name is Taylor Kingman. I'm the Board President of the San Angelo ISD Board of Trustees. We'll call this meeting to order. We have a quorum. All seven members of our board team are present. I'm gonna start with our script, introductory script, and then we will move forward into our invocation. So, good evening and welcome. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda workshop. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located in the back of the room prior to the start of tonight's meeting, should you want to speak on an issue not on our action agenda. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. The district's timekeeper will report and record the time. You will be notified when your time is up, and you are to stop speaking and return to your seat. You will not be given extra time. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers with a specific complaint will be referred to the district administration for information about the grievance process. If you already have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about the grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda, that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members and myself, do you please turn off or silence your cellphones. Again, thank you for being here and your support of SAISD. We are now gonna proceed with our invocation. Pastor Julian Falcon is here. He's the senior pastor at the Word of Life Church, and he'll be coming forward. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you. Just wanna thank the Lord for the rain that we're receiving. I know that as we have gotten older, we appreciate the rain more. When we were young, we just thought it will rain again. But if you've lived in West Texas very long, you know that doesn't always happen. So, we are grateful, Lord, for the rain. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the privilege you're giving us to be here this evening. Lord, I pray proverbs too over the men and women of the school board tonight, which says, "For the Lord gives wisdom; from his mouth come knowledge and understanding." And, Lord, I just pray a great blessing over really everyone that's in this room tonight, everyone that has a part tonight, that has their children here, that are gonna be a part of this time, Lord, that you would just, Lord God, give us unity, Lord God, not only in the nation but right here in this room, and that, Lord God, our desire is to work together to further not only your kingdom but to further the Independent School District here in the city of San Angelo. That, Lord God, it would run smoothly the way you have meant for it to do, and that, Lord, you would just give them knowledge and wisdom, the mind of Christ beyond their years, Lord. And, Lord God, I just pray a blessing and believe it, Lord, and we agree tonight in Jesus' name. And everyone said, amen. God bless.
Thank you. We now have four students from Goliad. We have Emmett Mata, Emma Martinez, Ryland Carrasco, and Thea Elliott, who are gonna come help with our pleasures of allegiance to both the United States and Texas. Come on up, guys.
(inaudible)
Stay up here so your parents and your principal can take pictures. All right. Thank you for that. All right, we're gonna move forward now with recognitions. Coach Rodney Chant is gonna, our executive director of athletics, is gonna come up, and we're gonna recognize Central and Lakeview athletes from multiple teams.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Dethloff, Board of Trustees. It was a great fall, and tonight we have a number of our teams and individuals who qualified for the postseason. First off, we wanna start off tonight is the Lady Cats volleyball team from Central High School, led by Julie Williams. So, Coach Williams, you wanna come up here?
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for having us. It is an honor and a privilege to be here, to give these girls some recognition that they deserve. So, we started off the season, they won the Crowley ISD tournament, and then they won the Needham Annoy tournament here in San Angelo. We finished district tied for second. Then we went on to win our by-district match against El Paso Franklin, which is something that hadn't been done in a couple of years. So, we were very pleased and excited about that. We fell short in the area round to South Lake Carroll, but we played hard, very proud of the girls' effort, finished the season with a 33-11 record. Again, just a tremendous season, accomplished a lot of things that hadn't been done in a long time in this program, and now you can meet who got those accomplishments done. So, our first one was number one, Addison Gilbert. She's a freshman outside hitter. She got pulled up for the playoffs this year. We expect a lot of good things out of her next year. Number two, Tiana Samaripa. She's a senior DS. She was honorable mention all district. She was academic all district and first-team academic all-state with the Texas High School Coaches Association. Number three, Brisa Balderas. She's a sophomore right side. She was honorable mention all district and academic all district. Number four, Laney Hill. She's a junior DS. She was second-team all district and academic all district. Number five, Cindy Crooks. She's our freshman middle blocker. She was second-team all district and academic all district. Number six, Sam Cardona. She's a junior outside hitter. She was first-team all district and academic all district. Number seven, Sam Foster. She's a senior DS this year. She was first-team all district and academic all district. Number eight, Journey Jones. She's a junior setter. She was named outstanding setter for District 26A, and she also received academic all district. Number nine, Jasmine Gibson. She's a sophomore right side outside hitter for us who got pulled up for the playoffs. Again, just another young athlete that we expect a lot of good things out of next year. Number 10, Lily Schroeder. She's a senior DS this year. She was named second-team all district, academic all district, and second-team academic all-state with the Texas High School Coaches Association. Number 12, Tori Robertson, sophomore setter. Again, just another, one of our younger athletes who we pulled up for the playoffs, looking for good things out of her next year. Number 14, Addison Welch, sophomore DS. Again, another one that we expect a lot of good things out of in the following years. Number 15, Gigi Mackey. She's a sophomore middle blocker. She was named first-team all district and academic all district. Number 16, Emily Sikora. Emily's a junior outside hitter. She was named outstanding hitter for District 26A. She was also academic all district. She has also been named, this is the inaugural year for them, to do the Greater Ford Female Athletes of the Month, and Emily was the recipient for that for the month of October. She broke the single-season record this year for kills, which used to be 505. Emily finished the year with 613. And then we have our managers, two of the most important people up here, Hope Burris and Peyton Strickland. So, these are the young ladies. Again, just very proud of them, very proud of everything they accomplished this year, and we have, you know, an exciting future next year as well. So, again, thank you for having us. We appreciate you taking time to let us be here and give these girls some recognition. Oh, and we have assistant coach, Bridget Gonzalez is also here tonight. Oh, and Coach Millsab's back there at the back too. Hey, I didn't see you. So, again, thank you. We appreciate it.
Next up, we have Aaron Leeper, who's the head cross-country coach at Lakeview High School, and we have the boys' cross-country team here.
Yeah, right there. But then face that way. Boys, they don't always know what's going on. See? There we go. I don't know. We're just arranging them. So, I'm Coach Leeper, and this year, our boys' team as a whole advanced to regionals, which was pretty cool because I think the last time the boys' team advanced as a team was in 2019. So, for them to do that this year, it was a long time coming, and we were super excited. It was a really close scoring because we all held our breath as they were calling names, hoping that we were gonna get to advance, and we did. And they worked extremely hard all season long to get there. And so, the runner is standing closest to me, looking at me like he's scared in the blue shirt. That is our senior. That is Sterling Cook. Wave at everybody, Sterling. Jump. He's been with us for four years, ever since he was a freshman, and so we hate to see him leave, but we're very excited for everything that he's done while he's been on our team. Standing next to him is a junior. That's Daniel Perez. He's been with us for all three years of his high school career so far. So, fortunately, we get to have him again next year. Standing next to him is sophomore Randall Brer. This is his first year on varsity with us, and so we get to keep him for two more years. That's really exciting. And standing furthest on the end is Leo Villarreal. He is a character. He's been with us for two years. He didn't join our team until his junior year, but we are really excited to have had him for the two years that we did have him. Not all of our team is represented here. We are missing three other runners, but they do work and do other things, so it's sometimes hard to get them up here in the evening. But we appreciate you guys for allowing us to be here and for appreciating us, these kids. I love working with this program, and so for me to be able to brag on them means a lot to me. So, thank y'all very much.
Next up, we have the ladies' Central cross-country team led by Toni Vu. Toni Vu is also the head boy soccer coach, and this year took over the cross-country program and did a fabulous job in his first year. So, come on up, Coach Vu, to introduce your team.
We just wanna thank y'all for the opportunity to recognize our outstanding young ladies tonight. Joining me is Coach Cottle, my assistant here on the far right. But all these girls and all the rest of our team, they trained really hard all season. I mean, these girls were the backbone of our team this year, with the exception of the regional meet. They placed at least third in every single meet they ran in, had two runner-up finishes, and brought home three first-place championships at the Jimned Warpath Invitational, the Waco Invitational, and the Battlin Badger Invitational in Lampaces. We're gonna start off with our freshmen first. We have Hayden Baldiaz. We have three sophomores, but only two could be here tonight. First, we have Presley Eubank. And for Presley, this was her second consecutive year to run at regionals. We're missing Mackenzie Salisbury tonight. Here is Brooklyn Stamps. Okay, we have a couple juniors on our team. We have Naomi Bejum. And this is actually her third year to compete at regionals. She qualified as an individual her freshman year, and then last year, the whole team competed at regionals. And then this year, she finished ninth overall at the district meet. Then we have junior Hannah Zwiebel. This was also Hannah's second year to compete at regionals, and she was also our Hollands Award winner, awarded at our banquet earlier this year. And then last, we have our lone senior, Lindsay Laba. This is actually her first year in our program. She's new to Central this year, but she was also a Texas High School Coaches Association Academic All-State Second Team selection for her achievements in the classroom, and then she plans to attend A&amp;M University and major in aeronautical engineering. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to come here and recognize these outstanding young ladies, and we're looking forward to next year. I mean, we're only losing one out of these seven girls that made it to regionals, so we're looking forward to next year. A lot of them are competing in track as well, so hopefully they'll be back in the spring to be recognized for achievements in that sport as well. So, again, thank y'all for having us.
Next up, we have the Lakeview tennis team led by John Lloyd. Coach Lloyd is a SAISD product, graduated from Central, and has come back to coach at Lakeview, his first year at Lakeview as a tennis coach. And so, come on up, Coach Lloyd, and go and have your team come up here and stand out.
Thank you for having us. We have four, I'll go ahead and introduce the players first. Santiago Martinez. Daniel Sosa. Camden Irvine. E.J. Campos. Sutton Lampier. Saxton Hanson. Daniel Vargas. Noah Ramos. Omar Ramirez. Liz Mota, who couldn't be here tonight, Gabrielle Flores. Kim Toscano. Samantha Perez. Adam Maurice Rangel. Jaela Constant, I can't say her name very well. Constant, I can't even say it, sorry. Sorry, Jaela. Emma Gonzalez. And Angie Mota, who couldn't be here as well. And this is Coach Warner, my assistant. We finished the district season 2-2, but we were able to, we got third place in district. And for district honors, we had Liz Mota and Kim Toscano, second-team all district. Gabby Flores and Samantha Perez, first-team all district. Adam Maurice Rangel and Emma Gonzalez, honorable mention. Daniel Sosa and Jaela Constant, I can't, there you go. Constantio, there you go, sorry. Honorable mention. And boys' singles, Santiago Martinez, second-team all district. And at two, Camden Irvine and Daniel Sosa, both, they kinda switched roles, so they got honorable mention at number two. E.J. Campos, second-team all district. Liz Mota, second-team all district in singles. Gabby Flores, honorable mention. Kim Toscano, first-team all district. Samantha Perez, honorable mention. Adam Maurice Rangel, honorable mention. And Jaela Constantio, honorable mention as well. And with all the district coaches, E.J. Campos was named Newcomer of the Year. We wanna thank you for having us and appreciate your time.
Last and certainly not least is we have the Central tennis team led by Brent Abalas.
All right, I'm gonna try to get through this. My voice is a little bit gone tonight. So, we'll see how it goes. If it cracks, I'm sorry. We have a group. We got a lot. Okay, first and foremost, first and foremost, we'd like to say thank you to the principals, the faculty, administration, everybody that helps us along the way, helps us set up, have our awesome facilities, takes care of us, lights, everything that we need to make it all, the circus, go round and round and round. And so we thank y'all, and we appreciate y'all for that. We have one of, if not what I think is one of the best facilities out in West Texas. A lot of people love coming. A lot of people talk about our courts all the time, and it's just great to host tournaments there and have people come to us. This year, we're gonna host three tournaments in the spring, and so that's nice because we have quite a few people that always ask to come play at our court. So, that's a testament to all of y'all that help fund all those things and help us out there. So, thank y'all very much. I appreciate, we appreciate that. The community, thank you to the community, all the people that make the things go round and round with us, you know, Bintwood Country Club, College Hills, SAC, everything. It takes a village to do the things that we do, and we get to be but a small part of it. And so, we'd like to thank all those people, especially parents. Thank you, parents, because without them, driving to and from lessons, back to school, tournaments on weekends, everything that they do, where they help support our program, snacks, waters, the smallest things, they don't go unnoticed. But it takes a lot of working things to get to where we are and to help us and have our program succeed. So, thank you, parents, and thank you, community, for that. We appreciate that. My first shout-out, I'm gonna thank Coach Weaver. She is our new assistant coach. She came to us from the Metroplex, and she has been undoubtedly helpful in every possible single way. She's the most organized person I've ever known in my entire life. People ask me how we were able to do it without her last year, and I'll be honest, I don't know. It was like a blur. But now, everything is in a Google Drive and document and everything. But now, everything is in a Google Drive and document and everything. And so, we'd like to thank her for that and thank you for helping and being like a psychiatrist also and helping, so thank you, Coach Weaver. All right, getting to the year, I'll make it quick. We had a phenomenal year this year. We hit the ground running. I think the second day of August, third day of August, we were already on our way to the Metroplex to play some very good teams. It was hot, we were sweating. I don't think anybody passed out this year on trips, but we had the liquid IVs and everything ready to go and frog togs like you can't imagine. We could have been a sports commercial for Academy. But we grinded all the way through October. We had a fantastic year, I think all the previous years before. We had eight losses, you know, right there, I think almost every year, eight losses, seven losses, but this year was our best year by far. We had 24 wins and six losses, so we had 30 matches on the year. We were the District Two 6A runner-up. We lost a tight match to Friendship this year, 9-10. If we could go back and do it all again, I guarantee you, we'd beat them nine times out of 10. But that one day, it was just their day, and that's okay, because I think it spurred us into the playoffs, ready to go, kind of kept us humble a little bit. We ended up being the 6A by-district champions. We beat El Paso Eastwood 19-0. We were the 6A-area champions. We beat Keller Timber Creek 10-3. And we went on to the regional quarterfinals where we came up short to South Lake Carroll, but it's South Lake Carroll, and they are a phenomenal team. And we competed, we were right there in some matches, but that's our goal. Our goal's always to get past South Lake Carroll, pass the third round. If we would have won two more matches, we could have been at the state tournament. And so, that's our goal, and that's what we'll do. And I told the kids, I said, "If we don't ever make it, just put on my tombstone, die trying." So, we'll give it all we got. We had numerous All-District honors, including first teams, second teams, and honorable mentions. I don't want to go through all of those, but I would like to recognize some of those kids. So, at this time, if you received a 6A All-District Honorable Mention, step forward and give a little wave. There we go. If you received a second-team All-District, please step forward and give a little wave. If you received a first-team All-District award, please step forward and give a little wave. Not only with our season that wrapped up and a phenomenal season, we had great accolades off the court, and we had three players receive Academic All-State honors. Second-team Academic All-State honors are Carly King and Carter Lyles. Step forward, guys. And first-team Academic All-State was Jackson Waddington. Just step forward. Did I say it wrong, Jackson, again? Sorry, Waddington. I went to school with a kid, never mind. All right. With that, that wrapped up our team season, and we've jumped into offseason. We still have JV doing some stuff, so we're still playing tournaments with them. We had phenomenal year. We're going to grind and get ready for the spring season, which is our UIO individual season, and we can't wait to see what these guys do and all their accolades that they have coming up. And I can't wait to be up here in a couple of months telling you about the next great things that we've done in the spring. So, thank y'all very much for having us. We appreciate y'all. We appreciate everything you do for us, and we'll see you in a few months. Thank you.
All right, so that concludes our recognitions of Central and Lakeview athletes. And now, we're going to move forward with Molly Turk, and she's going to do recognition of SASD employee veterans and Goodfellow Air Force Base partnership.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Our next recognition this evening is a very important one and made in appreciation of and respect for our nation's veterans by humbly recognizing and thanking all those who served, including SASD alumni, family members, and with a special recognition and gratitude of our SASD difference-maker employee veterans and past and present service members at Goodfellow Air Force Base. Our employee veterans add so much to our SASD team, and we cannot express our gratitude enough. Tonight, we want to take a moment to honor their contributions by highlighting a few of our veterans to show how veterans are an integral part of our SASD story. Join us in honoring and paying tribute to three SASD employee veterans joining us tonight and all of our countrymen who have served. So, first, we're going to recognize Major Christopher Carney, who's one of our Central High School ROTC instructors. He served for almost 27 years in the US Air Force. Next, we have Technical Sergeant Sandra Radley. She is one of our Lakeview High School JROTC instructors, and she completed tours across the globe from Goodfellow Air Force Base here in San Angelo and as far as Suwon Air Force Base in South Korea. Next, we have Chief Master Sergeant Kathleen Prince. She is our other Central High School JROTC instructor, and she served for 30 years in our US Air Force. And I'd also like to just make a note about Major Jason Esquell, who is our other Lakeview ROTC instructor, and he is out supporting students tonight as they do a color guard, so special thanks to him. Finally, we would also like to honor our important partnership with Goodfellow Air Force Base and our SASD military families. Thank you to Goodfellow for our SASD military families that sacrifice so much for our country and community, and thank you for all you do to support our students. Tonight, we have with us Kristin Donaldson, who is our school liaison, to accept the appreciation on behalf of our partners at Goodfellow and all of our SASD families at Goodfellow. So, thank you, Kristin, and all of Goodfellow. We are so appreciative of the varied perspectives of these service members bringing to our school communities in San Angelo and thank them for the freedoms they have helped preserve for each of us. So, thank you. We're going to take a photo. Dr. Detloff?
All right, so that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Next on our agenda is our minutes. We have minutes from August 28, 2023 Regular Board Meeting, October 10, 2023 Pre-A agenda Workshop, October 16, 2023 Regular Board Meeting, the October 17, 2023 Workshop, the October 30, 2023 Workshop, and the October 31, 2023 Workshop. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Move for approval.
I have a second. So, I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Dr. Mills to approve the minutes as outlined previously. All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. Now, we have public comments for topics not on the agenda this evening. I don't have anyone that's signed up. I don't see anyone coming up. Perfect, we're going to move on. Public topics, public comments for topics on the agenda of this evening. Again, I don't have anyone signed up. So, we're going to move on to reports. We're going to start with a construction update from Mr. Jason Hendry.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight, I have Ty Cisco with Park Hill Architects, and he's going to discuss our projects at Fannin and McGill.
Thank you. So, starting with McGill, we're having OAC meetings every other week. The trenches and the footings are completed. Rebar is in the process of being put in and underground plumbing and installation. Electrical is also underway and reinforcing steel for the slab. The rain is slowing us down just a little bit. Went by both sites today, and Fannin was just a day or two from being able to pour that slab, and so they're pushed back just a little bit. But work was continuing over at McGill, and so they were working in the rain today. So, they're trying to keep up with schedules. I have a few updated pictures for you. This is at McGill, and as you can see, the trenching for the footings is going in as well as the reinforcing steel. For some of the plumbing and trenches for that. Electrical conduit going in as well. So, there's a lot going on, it's just not a whole lot to see yet. All this stuff that everybody takes for granted is being done right now. Let's see. Over at Fannin, we're progressing, the rain's slowing them down. Again, on pouring that slab, vapor barrier is in place, so hopefully that'll help keep the water out of that base material and speed things up once it does dry up. Let's see, it was scheduled for the ninth, then rescheduled to today, and so now could be end of this week, next, or first of next week before they can pour that slab. And then, the structural steel will be delivered in November, early December, and we'll start seeing some more vertical elements coming above ground, so. But making progress, just a little challenge here and there. Here's a few pictures over at Fannin. You can see the yellow vapor barrier in place, keeps that moisture from getting into the slab later. A lot of the steel, all the plumbing is in. That's really about it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cisco. Obviously, we're happy that it's raining in West Texas. Wish the concrete was poured before it started raining, but we're going to take the rain when we can get it.
Yes, sir.
So, I know that obviously the rain has slowed us down last week and this week at Fannin. Are we still on?
I have not seen the updated schedule. Should be coming in next week's meeting, but that's still the goal, and I know they're trying to make up lost time in the last week or two, so we'll get you that updated schedule.
Perfect, thank you.
It's, what was the final date? Yeah, August of next year, so it's, we're trying to hit school year.
What is the first day of school next year?
Exactly. Every last minute, so.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Cisco? All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our next report is our student enrollment report for the 10th Monday of school, which was October 23, 2023. Our enrollment as of that day was 13,193, which again is above the magic number we budgeted for. Just of note, we still have several elementary schools that are hovering around the 300 enrollment mark, and as we continue to look through to how we're going to best equip our students and our staff, we're going to have to continue to monitor that over the next several months. Next is an update on academic programs. I believe Dr. Gomez is going to introduce that.
Yes, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Ms. Diego, Ms. Pidgen, will, for academic update, will discuss our Title III program. As a reminder, last week in the pre-agenda, Ms. Pidgen reported as Mrs. Diego, Mrs. Klein were out representing SASD at the assessment conference. So, Ms. Diego is coming up. While she is coming up, I also would like to point out and send a special thank you to Ms. Burtis Uplovede, the principal at Bradford for our bilingual magnet, and also Ms. Malia Taylor, who's the counselor there at Bradford. So, we know your schedules are very full. Thank you for being here this evening. And then, Ms. Diego will take us through the Title III program evaluation.
Okay. Good evening, school board and Dr. Detloff. First, I wanted to start by recapping for you the three variations of programming that we have here in SASD to support our English language learners. First off, we have a transitional bilingual early exit program that is held at Bradford and Glenmore Elementary. Sorry. This model allows our English learners to transition from their first language to their second language in three to five years. The second is our ESL content-based, mainly used in our pre-K through second grades on our other elementary campuses. This means that the same ESL teacher teaches all four core subject areas to our EB students included in a monolingual classroom. Our third model used is the ESL pullout program used on our elementary campuses and secondary campuses. This is mainly for our third through 12th grade classes. Again, the goal of each of these programs is English proficiency in the four domains of reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The only difference is that these students do not have the same ESL certified teacher for all core subjects. So, I'm going to begin talking a little bit about our emergent bilingual program as a whole with each of these components. A concern each year is the identification of our emergent bilingual students and why here at SASD we have such a low percentage. As this year, we are at 6.6% of our total student population. However, if you look at this slide, it shows a distribution of emergent bilingual students across Texas. In Region 15, an average of about 0 to 9% are identified as emergent bilinguals. So, this is a confirmation that SASD is within the average range of our area in Texas. As you can see, this slide shows our enrollment for the last five years here in SASD. We continue to see growth in our emergent bilingual population even when we are seeing a reduction in student numbers district-wide. Our precise numbers are shown here. We have 396 emergent bilingual students in secondary and 484 in the elementaries. Yearly, our students are evaluated on their English language proficiency through a test called TELPOS, which stands for Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment Standard. TELPOS is our emergent bilingual program as star is to our academics' achievements. Students are tested in four domains of listening, speaking, reading, and writing yearly. Of these students, we reclassified nine in secondary and foreign elementary. For the past four years... For the past four years, students have had to score advanced tie in each of those four domains. This year, in the 2023 and '24 school year, the criteria has changed to where students are reclassified using a composite, which we consider an average score of advanced tie. This graph shows how many of our students would have been reclassified last year had we used the new standard, and you can see a significant increase. Now I'm going to transition into talking about measures that we are using to show that our program models are benefiting all of our students, starting with the bilingual program at Bradford and Glenmore. First, I'd like to point out that the enrollment of this program in the past two years has really grown. These are the numbers for the last three years. You see the number of students followed by the percentage of the total EB enrollment for the district in each grade the program is offered. One of our main passions as an emergent bilingual program is to see more of our Spanish EB students enrolled in this program. We believe strongly that biliteracy only helps our students in their educational journey. Take note that these numbers were as of today. However, after visiting one of the schools today, we are enrolling seven new kids just this week into our bilingual program. With our program growing, we are going to take this opportunity to highlight our future needs. We are in need of funding for an additional bilingual teachers. Currently in pre-K, we have the highest enrollment we have ever had since starting the program. This is an indicator that we may need additional support in kinder and the years to follow. Funding for additional tutors in our secondary schools. Currently, we have student support teachers that are really working hard on our foundational literacy skills. But our ESL and ELAR teachers benefit so much from push and support for our newcomers and our beginners. On such marker of biliteracy, indicating the achievement is shown on this reading assessment that each elementary student takes at the end of second grade. The program is called DIBELS. This compares our second grade, this graph compares our second grade EB students last year who were served in our program through the EB to those who were not in the EB program. Second grade is the year where our students start transitioning to 50% Spanish and 50% English by the end of the year. The advantage that biliteracy gives to these students is evident in comparison to the emergent bilingual peer group not in the program. Another data point we would like to share is the ESL program in our high schools. This past year, we collaborated with TEA in identifying the root cause of RB EB's lack of success in our STAR EOC exams. Through that process, we were able to set some goals to reach for these students. Our program goal for results-driven accountability was to increase our EB student performance results in our STAR EOC test. This slide shows the goal that we set as a district for growth in the areas set forth by TEA. When working with TEA last year, they helped us develop an attainable goal as a district to support our EB's in high school. As you can see here, our progress toward meeting those goals is evident on this slide. While we have not been given our level through TEA, we are pleased with the growth of our students in these STAR EOCs. This growth could potentially place us in a Level 2, which is TA's goal. The Level 1 is the highest performance you can receive. So as SAISD, we should receive a Level 2 this year. We don't want to stop there, though. This year, we have been able to recreate classes that provide more targeted support at each of our secondary campuses through a reading program that helps our newcomers and beginning and intermediate English profession students to acquire the literacy skills more quickly. We are confident that we have the right people in place to help our teachers, help our students grow in these skills. Not only have we offered a professional learning opportunities to those student support teachers, but we address professional learning for all our teachers at SAISD, elementary, middle, and high school. Whether a part of the bilingual program or in an ESL setting, as many teachers we will have at least one emergent bilingual student at some point in our careers in our classroom. We offer this learning in all of our settings, as you see in this slide. You also have two artifacts from leadership meetings that we have given to our ICs. First of all, those are called our instructional coaches. They have turned their learning around to their teachers on their campuses. The first is the best practice poster. Something as simple as learning to pronounce an emergent bilingual student's first name goes a long way with the student feeling supported in their learning. Our second link is a 2023-2024 Elps Essential. Our program identified two Elps for students to focus as a result for looking at TELPOS scores and determining that students need many opportunities to speak and write with, as at SAISD. That is two of our focuses this year with our emergent bilingual students. You will see those Elps along with the sample objective so that teachers have some tangible tools to strengthen their skills regardless of the content they teach. We also continue to offer ESL and bilingual test prep in the district and throughout the region. We not only pay for their sub, but we also pay for them to take the test. And once they become certified, we pay for them to have that certification put on their ESPEC certification. Another key for emergent bilingual students is family, parent, and community engagement. As a district, we strive to increase and strengthen family, parent, and community engagement in order to improve the English language skills of our emergent bilingual learners and to assist parents and families in helping their children to improve their academic achievement and in becoming active participants in the education of their children. One such way that we are building that engagement is through our Manos a la Obra program that is held twice a year. They are held at different campuses. Here, we give away books. We have community resources that are available for our emergent bilingual parents, and they come and offer and give information. One of our biggest partners is Howard College, and one of the biggest reasons why we love to have Howard College is because they offer ESL classes for our parents, and a lot of our parents are involved in those classes. We also have campus events, also to help our families stay involved in their students' education. Cultural celebrations are another integral way that our campuses connect with families. These two slides show how different campus events and organizations, with a few seen here, help one another with their academic achievements, such as the Bradford Danzas, the Fort Concho, Damitas, and Charritos, and our Central High School International Organization. All of these organizations help celebrating our culture and academics with our emergent bilingual students. Lastly, I want to close out with this. This quote is from a parent who was here in the United States, in Texas, but was at a different school district. He told us that his two children struggled really hard in schools and were not enjoying it. So as a parent, he made a hard choice to move his wife and his two kids back to Mexico. He works in one of the facilities that one of our bilingual parents works at, in which they began talking about the school setting, and that parent said, "You need to bring your child back." "San Angelo ISD offers an amazing bilingual program. Your kids will love it." And he did just that. He brought the kids. He said that at his last district, they cried every morning. He couldn't even get them out of the class or just car, out of the house. Now his kids are very excited at the program, very eager to learn, very eager to go to school every day. So we are super excited that a testimony to what we are doing in our bilingual program is really helping our students. With that, I can take questions, but first of all, I do want to say to thank you to our school board, a sincere thank you for unwavering support of our bilingual program. Your commitment to fostering linguistic diversity is truly appreciated, and it positively impacts our students' educational experience. I'd also like to address los participantes por la televisión. Gracias a todos nuestros padres bilingues por confiarnos la educación de sus hijos y por su confianza en el proceso. Su apoyo es fundamental para crear un entorno de perdizaje para nuestros estudiantes. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Diego. I appreciate you being here. And obviously, as a district, we believe, not only does the data in our own district support the emergent bilingual program at Bradford, but that's nationwide data, it's not just our data.
Yes, sir.
And we're lucky enough to do some campus showcases a few months, a few weeks ago, a month ago, with Mrs. Sepulveda and at Bradford, and it's amazing what's going on over there.
Thank you.
So, obviously, with a district our size, having a magnet program at one campus where we can pool as many resources as possible to give as much support to those children makes complete sense. And as a board, we're committed to continuing that magnet program and making sure that we're doing everything we can. Obviously, we've, as a board and with the administration team, we've increased bilingual stipend, and we'll continue to support that in any way we can in order to try and help these kids get reading as quickly as possible. Just because, just like with our phonics program in K through 3 for English speakers, we need a program like this so that by third grade, we get these kids up to reading as well as we can, as quickly as we can. So, thank you for all y'all's hard work at Bradford and throughout the district of the pull-out campuses and everything else, too. But I just got to go to Bradford, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. So, we will move forward. We have consent items A through E. We have considered donations. We had an anonymous donation for $500 to cover student meal charges that were delinquent. We have considered annual Title III program evaluation. Item C is bid 20-009, which is in addition to the maintenance transportation and miscellaneous supplies bid, bid 20-014, which is in addition to the curriculum and instruction materials. And then we have item E, which is considered superintendent recommendations for personnel for school year '23-'24, and we have one named for there. Any board comment on consent items A through E? I have a motion to approve consent items A through E.
Make a motion to approve consent items A through E?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Ms. Mizell Flint. Any other board comments? All in favor say aye. All against say the same. Motion passes seven zero. Next, we have considered bills, accounts, and financial statements for our October 31st, 2023.
Move for approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion from Mr. Dindel and a close second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comment?
And Dr. Kingman, all these reports that are in our board packet have been reviewed previously at our pre-agenda meeting. In addition to that, these same reports can be found online on our website, saisd.org, under the District tab and then under a sub-tab that's marked Financial Transparency. All these reports, including our checkbook, are online for folks to view in our effort at financial transparency.
All right, having no further board comment? All in favor say aye. All against say the same. Motion passes seven zero. So now we have consider electorative candidates to serve on the Board of Directors of the Tom Green County Appraisal District for the '24-'25 term. Mr. Brandon?
Dr. Detloff, Dr. Kingman, members of the board. The current two-year term of the Five-member Board of Directors of the Tom Green County Appraisal District ends December 31st, 2023. On October 10th, the Board of Trustees of San Angelo ISD nominated the current five members of the appraisal board to another two-year term. The Board of Trustees of San Angelo ISD is entitled up to 1,822 votes to cast for the appraisal board candidates. Those can be cast in one lump sum or divided in any way across the five candidates. Our recommendation this evening is to cast those 1,822 votes with 364 votes each for Luis Gomez, Candy Poole, Bob Reeves, and 365 each for Scott Tankersley and Eric Wilson.
Any questions for Mr. Brandon? All right. So do I have a motion to adopt the resolution of casting the district's 1,822 votes and enter the votes on the ballot for submission to the Tom Green County Appraisal District?
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution casting the district's 1,822 votes and enter the votes on the ballot for submission to the Tom Green County Appraisal District.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Dindel. Any further board comment or questions? All in favor say aye. All against say the same. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Dr. Brandon. Oh, you get to stay again. We're gonna recuse Mr. Dindel.
Dr. Kingman, this next item on our agenda, I'm a part owner in the property that's being considered not, so I'd like to recuse myself from any discussion or vote from that. So, thank you.
All right, Dr. Brandon?
The district currently stores district textbooks and curriculum materials in the Technology Building located at 515 Cattle Street at Central High School. In anticipation of a possible move of technology offices and a remodel of that space for additional classrooms, textbooks, and curriculum materials in the current warehouse space will need to be moved. So, Mr. Henry and I have spent about the last month looking around San Angelo IV warehouse space. We need to be able to move our district furniture and textbooks that are in great condition to a spot so that we can palletize those that are out of adoption and begin to clean those spaces and be ready. So we have, just to kind of go through the list with you, we've put those in order of the top six. There are certainly several warehouses that were smaller, 2,000 to 4,000 square feet, that would not have been large enough. And what you'll see from the options tonight is the smaller warehouses are certainly at a higher price per square foot, $9, $10, and $11. And then if you get into some really large square feet in the warehouses, 100,000 square feet, that might drop as low as $4 to $5. So it's really trying to identify the need, what best fit the needs of the district. Option one, there's up to 18,000 square feet. This is where they store cotton bales. And in a year that there hasn't been as much rain, the owner has side-by-side warehouses and fills one and not the other, and then will rent out that space to try to bring in income instead of the building being empty. It does have a loading dock. It did have water and restrooms, but there's no perimeter fencing, no gated entry. And then at some point, somebody had broken into the facility and stole all the copper wiring, so there was no lights inside of the building at this time. And then they did say if next year, when the cotton crop began to come in, if it was a large crop, we would be asked to move our items out. So that one was a little bit worrisome. It was at a similar price range, 10,000 square feet for $6,000 a month. There's a couple of pictures. The loading dock and then the inside space was not insulated, but it was a cleaner facility. And option two, 114,000 square feet, much more than what we needed. But you can see at $4.25 a square foot, even though the price is better, price point per square foot, when you get into that larger space, $484,000 a year, that certainly was larger than we needed, even though it had some of the other things that we liked. But before we got to this point, that property was rented. Option three, 4,000... Option three, 4,0011 South Chadburn, 18,000 square feet, which was double the size we really needed. But the owner said there was a wall that divided the warehouse inside and said he could separate the two spaces and us just rent half. It was probably not as clean as we would have liked. It was industrial business before it was vacant. And so there were some places within the building that had gaps or holes. And so one of the things we have to do is protect our instructional materials. And we have to protect our furniture. So, and it also, even though it had water, the water line runs across three different property owners. And they weren't able to get the water to come on, so they're not sure where the break is. And we didn't want to get, spend several months trying to locate what that problem was. Option four was a little smaller warehouse. It did have an office and a restroom with water, had a little showroom. But once you took those areas out, it made for a really small storage area. And it was the same way. It was not as clean as we would have liked. And the add-on in the back was not ever finished around the top. And so it had an area where rodents, birds, things of that nature would be able to get into the space. And also, no loading dock. Option five, same way included the restroom, offices, and water. But again, you know, when it's an industrial space, they're not so worried about how tight air sealed and things like that, that the building is. And so there were a lot of places in the building that would have had to have been fixed and corrected because of that. And still no insulation and no loading dock. Option six, 403 West 26th Street, was just about the right square footage, $7,800, $9.23 per square foot at $6,000 a month or $72,000 per year. It does have the loading dock. It is fenced, gated, it's very clean, insulated. And it has a division of spaces. So one warehouse is about 5,000 square feet, the other one close to three. And it'll give us the ability to put textbooks, curriculum, materials on one side, and district equipment, furniture in the other. So we could have the separation so that when they go out to work in those areas, those wouldn't be all commingled in the same space. We do like the security of the area. And also, even though it doesn't have the restroom, office, or water, just what you get with the building with a new roof. And it's airtight. I mean, it's sealed well and insulated. So we just feel like our district curriculum and materials will be better protected in option six. And it comes in at a price point comparable to everything else that we looked at. So you can see there, the loading dock, the two different buildings. You can also pull a truck trailer in. There was an assembly area when the guys put together classroom furniture and then take it back out to the classroom. So there's the loading dock, that picture on the left, and then the security fencing and the gated entry, where they're not getting out of the vehicle, unlocking, dragging a gate open. So anyway, that would be our recommendation this evening for option six.
So and Dr. Brandon, part of the reason for our leasing is we just have a really tight timeline with getting these new campuses open in August with having furniture and everything built and ready to go into those campuses, correct?
We do, yes.
So this is not planned for the district to have a long-term lease. This is just a short-term lease until we can get into the facilities that we are currently remodeling or revising or any others that we're remodeling or revising and then possibly using space that the district already owns to serve as this, in this capacity in the future.
It will be. You know, our goal in the property on option six, it was willing to do a six-month lease. So if we can be within that six-month to a one-year range, and then we'll identify another site that we've had a chance to go in and completely clean out and make ready for warehouse. So that would be the goal, to use this in a short term, to be able to move the other items, complete the remodel, and then identify a space that we could use for our warehouse that's already district-owned.
And as far as from a conflict of interest aspect, we've already discussed with our lawyers, our attorneys, and we're going to make sure we all have the paperwork, et cetera, is filed appropriately. And obviously, we'll recuse Mr. Dindel if there's, if we decide to proceed with this, correct?
Yes, we contacted Walsh-Gallegos. And so they sent us a real property conflict of interest affidavit that has to be signed by Mr. Dindel. And then they also went through the lease agreement to make sure that it was in line with where we would need to be as a district. And protect him as a board member is also as protecting the district.
Any questions from the board regarding this?
Yeah, I was just going to, do we get used to both of those buildings on that property?
We, we do. So that would be for both warehouses. And we do like the fact that the dock actually connects. You can see that dock, loading dock in the middle, connects the two properties. And we can move from one side to the other.
And then also, it looks like they have another piece of, like that white building, that's part of it as well, isn't it? Are we going to put stuff in there, that little white building?
No, sir. It would just be the two silver, there, the two silver, side-by-side with the connecting dock.
When are we going to start putting stuff in there? Do you know when we start?
It would be this month. If the board approves the agreement tonight, we would start this month. We're ready to, we're ready to begin moving items.
Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to consider CVWV Properties LLC lease agreement. Option six?
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Ms. Mizell Flint. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes six-zero, Jessica. Thank you, Dr. Brandon. All right. Yeah, we need Mr. Dindel to come back in here.
He went to get him.
We're going to lose them both. All right. Next is item 13, which is, board to consider naming a lone finalist for the superintendent of schools for San Angelo ISD. I'm in charge of that one. So as most of you here tonight are aware, in June, Dr. Detloff announced his retirement effective December 31st of this year. In July, after evaluation of multiple firms, the board selected Thompson and Horton to facilitate our search. In September, the board asked for feedback from the community to build a profile for our next superintendent candidate. We had great interest in our superintendency. Without a doubt, due to the hard work of Dr. Detloff and his team, as well as the strong family values in our community, San Angelo ISD is recognized as a desirable district to join. And we are able to get many outstanding candidates to apply. In October, we selected candidates to interview. And we now have completed the second round of interviews. After considerable, after careful consideration, I believe Dr. Chris Moran should be named as our lone finalist for San Angelo ISD Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Moran has served as a superintendent in both Brownsboro and White House ISD. He has been superintendent at White House since 2016. Under his leadership, the district has excelled in academics. And he has worked to normalize excellence in student engagement and success, staff communication, and professional development. He has helped to create a destination district. Dr. Moran received his Bachelor of Science from Evangel University, where he played basketball. He received his Master of Education at University of Texas at Tyler and his Doctor of Education from Stephen F. Austin. He serves as Vice President of the Texas Association of School Administrators. His wife Krista, of 28 years, and his four children, Rebecca, Elizabeth, Susannah, and David, are paramount to him, and each gave their blessing to interviewing in San Angelo. His references tout his integrity and work ethic. And in interviewing him, his faith and values align with our West Texas values. He has the skill set and desire to embrace our students, staff, parents, and community. He will be able to look at the successes in San Angelo ISD, but also analyze the areas for continued improvement. His experience aligns with the needs of our district. And for all those reasons and more, I make a motion that we name Dr. Chris Moran as the lone finalist for the SAISD Superintendent of Schools. Any board comment? Or do I hear a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion for myself and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any board comment?
Dr. Kingman, I know that the interview process we went through was exhaustive, extensive, and thorough. And our goal here at SAISD to be the best option for educational opportunities, as well as providing a wide variety of extracurricular activities and college and career readiness options for the students we serve. With that said, I'd like to welcome Dr. Moran and his family to San Angelo. And I look forward to working together to make SAISD, as Dr. Kingman referenced earlier, the destination district for students in San Angelo and the surrounding area.
Any other board comment?
I would just like to say that it was really refreshing to listen to, we had the opportunity to interview six candidates in person. And it was just really refreshing to have, to hear their passion for education and all the different things that they have done in their own districts and what they would like to bring to San Angelo. And I think we were really lucky to have such great candidates to interview. Really blessed to have that many. And then the last one, Dr. Moran really just rose to the top. And I'm excited to have him join us.
I just want to say, it was, it was a difficult process. It was not difficult, but it was just, we had a lot of great candidates. That's what made it difficult. And from, I just want to, if they watch this wherever they're at, the 30 candidates, for all of them, for applying, the six that came, and then the last two, they were just, it was, and Dr. Moran, our lone finalist, who did a wonderful job. I think we made a good pick. So, and all of you here on the board, it was, it was a fun job, so.
Any other board comment? All right. Having no further board comment? We have a motion for myself and a second from Mr. Gallegos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. All right, motion passes seven-zero. Yes, sorry. Thank you, Dr. Kingman, members of the board. I just want to congratulate you on a thoughtful and extensive process, many, many nights and meetings as you conducted a wide search for a superintendent. And Dr. Moran is an absolutely fabulous leader. I know him in our superintendent circles. And he is well-respected statewide. We are on, in organizations and participate in committees together. And you made a fabulous choice. And I know that he, along with our current staff, will strengthen our system. And I look so forward to welcoming him and providing a warm transition and a smooth handoff. So I just want to commend our Board of Trustees on an extensive and thoughtful process. And moreover, Dr. Moran is a fabulous person, father, spouse, and is just a great friend of public education. And I can't wait to see the, what's on the horizon for SAISD because the future is extremely bright. So thank you for your work. And I'll do everything possible to make this a smooth transition. All right. Any other board comment? All right, so moving forward to our announcements. We have a finance and pre-agenda workshop on December 11th. And we have a regular board meeting on December 18th. And with no further announcements, our meeting is adjourned.